Welcome to the January, January seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-three Board of Commissioners meeting. Please silence your cell phones, pagers, and other electronic communication devices. Agenda and speaker request forms are located at the back of the chambers. The commission now utilizes speaker request forms, so if you would like to speak on an item, please complete a speaker request form located on the bookshelf at the back of the chambers and return it to Commission Manager Holly Haddes located to my left, or yes, of the dais. I've called the meeting to order, and I'd ask Commissioner Deb Hagcock to do the moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hagcock. Next on our agenda is review and approval of the agenda. Is there any additions or changes?
Mr. Chair. How does the approval?
Moved by Drews.
Second.
Seconded by Roskinek to approve the agenda. Any public comments? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Motion passes. Next, we come to our consent agenda, and I'll recognize Commission Office Manager Holly Haddes.
Good morning, Commissioners. The Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes of the regular meeting from January third, two thousand and twenty-three. Number six is to acknowledge the determination of delinquent real estate taxes for the two thousand and twenty-one taxes payable in two thousand and twenty-two for the following funds. General Fund at two hundred and eighteen thousand, two hundred and eighty-three dollars and eighty-two cents. Accumulated Building Fund in the amount of thirty-four thousand, five hundred and eight dollars and seventy-three cents. The Fair Fund in the amount of two thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and thirty-two cents. Library Fund in the amount of two thousand, nine hundred and fifty-five dollars and seventy-four cents. The Fire Fund in the amount of one thousand, three hundred and ninety-three dollars and fifty-six cents. And the Unorganized Road Fund in the amount of fourteen thousand, one hundred and twenty-three dollars and ninety-five cents. Number seven is to acknowledge the filing of petition for the election on the question of incorporation of the proposed Darlington Estate Sanitary District by the voters within the proposed district boundaries. Number eight is approval of the chair's signature on a letter to Cross Savers, L L L P. Number nine is approval of the first quarter two thousand and twenty-three Local Emergency Management Planning Grant. Number ten is to declare a surplus of Motorola radio service monitor. Asset number three, seven, one, six, for the purpose of disposal is submitted by the Emergency Services Communication Center. And finally, number eleven is to recognize and thank the volunteers for the month of December two thousand and twenty-two.
Thank you, Ms. Holly. Is there anybody from the audience that would like any of those items pulled from the consent agenda? Any from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinek.
If to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Sir.
Motion's been made by Roskinek, seconded by Drews, to approve the consent agenda. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next, we come up on our agenda is item number twelve, the Black Hills Stock Show opening and proclamation. Mr., I'll recognize Mr. Ron Jeffries, General Manager.
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the commission. Appreciate your time here this morning. It is stock show time. We started last weekend with team sorting out at the fairgrounds, so events are underway and rolling. We've got a parking lot full of horse trailers and a arena full of horses and visitors to our area, so we're very excited about starting this week. Official dates for the Black Hills Stock Show are January twenty-seventh through February fourth, when all of our events kick off down at the monument. We've got award-winning rodeos with the PRSA rodeos and Sutton Rodeos, Rodeo Rapid City. We've got one of the largest trade shows in the region. Our numbers for, and what we use as indicators for vendors, for cattle entries, for horse sale entries, have been just off the charts. It's been just a tremendous amount of interest in this year's show. We like to see a little bit of moisture going into the start of the stock show. That always brightens everybody's mood a bit, so we're excited about that. I left a schedule of the events going on during the stock show for you, for your review. I did want to point out two things. The first thing is, on the twenty-seventh at nine a.m. in the Barnett Field House, we have the ribbon cutting for the kickoff of the Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo. So we'd be pleased to have you there for that event. And then the second item is Monday, the thirtieth, at five o'clock, is our celebrity showmanship. And if you recall, last year's grand champion, Sheriff Brian Mueller, is in the crowd with us today. Also representing the commission was Commissioner Ron Roskinek. So I would ask, Mr. Chairman, that you appoint somebody to be representative from the commission, however you go about doing that, so that we have somebody for that event. One of the things that's cool about this year is, we've partnered with the FFA students, and they're actually going to take everybody that participates an hour early. So they'll start at four o'clock and work with them, and just tell them a little bit about their perspective on showing livestock. Now, the livestock that you're actually showing come out of the animal nursery, so they've never been shown before, so it's not going to go like a, like a dream, and it's not supposed to be. It's supposed to be fun and entertaining. But it is a great chance for our celebrities to meet and talk with some of these FFA kids. It's a program that's really growing well in Rapid City, and we're proud of the job they've done. In fact, I think Rapid City Stevens, FFA, their ag communications program took first place in the state here, and we travel into the nationals here. So we're proud to work with both 4H and FFA at the Black Hills Stock Show. A complete packed event. We've got a number of ticketed items. The one big change in the schedule that I'll mention, two actual changes. First off, the former Stockman's Banquet Ball, we have taken that off the list as a stock show event. We're working with the Alliance of Agriculture Association here in Rapid City, who formerly the Elevate Ag Committee, and also talking with some other areas to broaden the scope and the look for that event, and then bring it back, most likely during the fair time. The second major change in the schedule is sheepdog trials and the National Sheepsharing Championships were typically held Thursday night at James Kirsten Event Center. They've been moved to Monday because we had an opening with no events that night, so they've been moved to Monday, and then we added an additional concert option, more traditional country-type music, Justin Moore concert this year for that Thursday. Otherwise, our schedule runs pretty true. We've got, as I mentioned, the Sins Trade Show and lots of great events and activities. I'd stand by for any questions.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Ron. Our Mr. Jeffries. We also do have a proclamation that Mr. Drews is going to read, and I will, before I go to you, Ron. On the twenty-seventh, normally we have every commissioner show up for that, so the plan is, is I'll say a few words, invite all the commissioners up, and then I'll have Mr. Drews read the proclamation, since he did, served a lot of meals during the past, and being on the passport, so.
Thank you.
Mr. Roskinek.
Ron, I was contacted by Black Hills Energy a few days ago, and I did volunteer to get out there and do some goat roping or whatever it is to do.
Wrangling.
I, hopefully I'll get my boot off on the twenty-seventh, so I won't be able to slip on any western cowboy boots, per se, but I can, I'll be out there doing the best that I can with, hopefully we'll have some of the future mayor of Rapid City there somewhere as well.
That would be excellent.
Another thing I'd like to just point out, if we could only find out what the gross sales for Runnings and Farm Fleet, if we could find out what they were two weeks before this event and what they were two weeks after during the event, it would, I'd really be curious. You know, we talked about that, the, what we don't realize, you know, just not the folks coming here and staying in motels, but the folks that are coming here and buying tractors and combines and, and their supplies for, you know, next summer, so. I'm really anxious to do some kind of an economic study to see what impact the stock show does for Rapid City and the surrounding area.
Mr. Chair.
Ron.
So we did do an economic impact study back in two thousand and eighteen, and of course, COVID hit, and, and our world exploded with events and activities. We are right now in discussions with Visit Rapid City to form a partnership to conduct another economic impact study. And now, the difference now is, before, we were doing extrapolations manually, I'll say, and now there are so many data points that these companies that do economic impact studies go, they can actually track your event population travels within this area, how far your visitors come from, so you get a lot more information, whether they stay at a motel that night or whether they go back home. There's just a lot more information that's available because of the, what I call Google stalking, where they, they follow your phone and everything you do. But we're right in the middle of putting together a plan that I hope to present to you here soon.
And I think some of that information, you know, you talked about Mike Madden. I used to hear Mike Madden do stuff for me, too, and he really relied heavily on South Dakota Department of Revenue, because you can, they can dial that down when people do their returns, exactly what segment of that market is performing and those that aren't. So I'm anxious to do that going forward.
Thank you.
Any other comments from Commissioners? Seeing none, I'm going to have Mr. Drews read the proclamation.
Okay, my pleasure. So Pennington County, South Dakota Executive Proclamation. Whereas the Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo has been an important part of the farm and agriculture industry in Pennington County and the western South Dakota region, and whereas, with the history rich in farming and ranching and originating from an idea to protect and honor agricultural communities, the Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo was born. With humble beginnings in nineteen fifty-eight, members of the Rapid City Chamber Ag Committee aim to combine the rural lifestyle with the quickly growing urban community of Rapid City. And whereas, since its inception in nineteen fifty-eight, the Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo has blossomed into a full-fledged spectacular event. Twenty twenty-three marks the sixty-fifth annual Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo in Rapid City, Pennington County, and western South Dakota. And whereas, the Central States Fair Organization is a critical element in producing and supporting the Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo for over sixty years. And whereas, the Central States Fair Management Staff, the Board of Directors, Community Leaders, City of Rapid City, Pennington County, the Monument and the hundreds of volunteers have provided the vision and passion to make this annual event a reality for all to enjoy. And whereas, we celebrate our years of Wild Western action, the Central States Fair Organization, Rapid City, and Pennington County are ready to go for the two thousand and twenty-three Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo. We come together to celebrate the South Dakota quality of life and good old western hospitality January twenty-seventh through February fourth, two thousand and twenty-three. Now therefore, we, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners, do hereby proclaim Friday, January twenty-seventh, two thousand and twenty-three through Saturday, February fourth, two thousand and twenty-three, as Black Hills Stock Show and rodeo week in Pennington County and, in Pennington County and Rapid City, and urge everyone to attend the show and support as many of the exciting events as possible. In testimony, whereas the Board of Commissioners has authorized our chairman to sign the proclamation. Thank you.
Very nice.
Thank you, Mr. Drews. Is there a motion for approval?
So move, Mr. Chair.
Move. Moved by Roskinek, seconded by Drews. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you. For a, for a complete schedule and ticket information, it's blackhillstockshow.com.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Ron.
Next on our agenda is the two thousand and twenty-one Financial Compliance Audit Exit Report from the State of South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit. I recognize Mr. Bruce Heintz, Auditor in Charge.
Morning. How we doing?
Good.
Finished the audit up the thirtieth of December. Report's out, it's been released. I did a preliminary closing with Lloyd to get the representation letter signed. No findings in the, you know, written findings in the report itself. The financial statements were fairly presented. The opinion letters say it's an unqualified opinion, which means they're fairly presented, so that's all good. The things I want to talk to you guys about today are just some oral things. Nothing we're discussing today is in the report, no findings in the report or anything, so a good report. That was good. You should have two letters. One letter is, is called a letter to those in charge of governance. It's got, it's the one that, they're both on our letterhead, I guess, but it's the one that has the one through eight on the first page. That is directed towards the board in regards to any issues or disagreements or anything like that we had with, with management and working through the course of the audit. And as you can read through the letter, we had no problems, no issues or anything like that with, with any of the management or any staff or anything. So, letter, we just started, I think, in the last couple of years, something the standard's required, so something was brought to the attention of the board if we had some issues or anything, so. The other letter that you should have is called our management letter, and that's a, a form that we use to communicate any findings we have, that, whether they're written or oral, they go into this letter. Like I said, we have no written findings in the report. The, the things that are in here are just oral, that'll just be discussed with us today, not published or anything like that. We cover three areas, basically, any deficiencies we have in internal controls, any deficiencies or violations of state statutes or contracts or, or anything like that, and then any potential audit adjustments we make. So if you turn to the second page, I've got three items that I was going to discuss today. We had, that's what we, and then, like I told Lloyd, when I talked to him on the thirtieth, we've had some issues with the Sourcewell bidding process. And we've started to ask some questions about it as far as, are any of the entities, local governments, cities, schools, or counties, are you guys verifying what that price is that Sourcewell is bidding? And so many of the local governments are only receiving information from the vendor that they're buying the product from, and that doesn't really quite cut it. So, so I, you know, I talked with Chris quite a bit, and she had a contact person with Sourcewell, and I think she, the bid, the bid issue we had was some dump trailers that were bought through the highway department. There were six of them. And the price is tied to everything that, that the vendor had and everything, and so she started contacting her person with Sourcewell, and I think she's got a method now to be able to tie that down. We received some kind of a bid document, I can't remember what it was, but it was, it was in an Excel spreadsheet, and it had a bunch of prices on it and everything, but I didn't know all the options or anything. I couldn't verify anything, and I told Chris, well, at this point in time, that's something that should have been done during the bidding process, not a year and a half later. So, something she was going to look at and stay in touch with them and then work through that moving forward, you know, and that's with any of the Sourcewell, like I said, and it's, it's a problem we had with, with a lot of the, pretty much all we audited is counties, but it's something that's come up with all the counties and.
Quite applicable.
Yeah, 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 so. The other two items I have are regards to the, the, some of the COVID money you guys received for rental assistance when we were testing that. Al had some issues. We pulled, pulled a ten percent sample, I think, I think there was five hundred and some odd recipients, I think, that received rental assistance through, through one of the COVID programs, the federal government issue. We tested fifty, I think it says in there, fifty-three, fifty-three payments, and we had problems with a couple of them coming up with their, with their annual income. And I think what Al told me, he found out, was that, that there was a miscalculation as far as the number of weeks that they were counting for, for annual pay. I think they missed a couple of weeks or something. I think it was, ended up with the two that we had problems with. I think it was a couple thousand dollars, is all it was. So like I said, that's, that's something to watch for the future, because I asked Al if this was just a one-time deal for this year, for fiscal year twenty-two, and he says, no, I think there's, a million dollars, did he say? Five million dollars? It's a chunk of money I think you guys got several years to spend on, so it's, it's something to watch moving forward to make sure the, that you get the calculations documented and, and that they're, they're accurate within the guidelines, what the guidelines say as far as, far as kicking out that assistance. And then the other item was also related to the, to the income levels. Some people have come in, they say they have no income, and there's, I guess, some kind of a income estimation form that they're supposed to fill out, and we didn't have that in, in all cases, I guess, and just to make sure that the recipients sign that document and that it's included in the file, so. Other than that, I don't have anything else, I guess. I just stopped to do a closing, let you guys know the couple of things we did find. Just said the report was good. See if you guys have any questions.
I'll just pass on the, a little bit of the conversation was with Bruce and Cindy. This has been communicated with the staff that, that it's happened, and, and they, they're taking steps to correct those deficiencies, so I think bringing it to our attention is good. Is there any questions for Bruce from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Mr. Drews.
So Bruce, appreciate you and Al doing this again. Not that it's, that's something that we have a choice of doing, it needs to be done, but appreciate your thoroughness on it. I think we probably fully would anticipate that we're going to have a few questions raised relative to the COVID dollars and how they were spent and where they were spent, and all the verification that needs to go along with it. That's a little bit of a haphazard type thing that comes, and you have a short period of time in which to commit and expend the funds and so forth. I'm glad to hear that there isn't anything major that you feel that is there. And pointing out the, you know, a couple of things that we can be looking for in the future, because it will pay out over a period of, of years as we set it up. So I think that the auditor and human resources have done a, a, a good job in regard to it, so thank you.
And something else, I guess, related to that, I know Al was talking with, when he was working on it, he had communications with the state with, I don't know if that was run through South Dakota Housing or who that was run through, that rental assistance program, but I know when we looked at the COVID money the year before, a lot of the counties use that money to, for reimbursements for payroll, for public safety and that kind of thing, and law enforcement, near nine-one-one and all that. And a lot of that information was uploaded to the state's website, to some portal, I guess that's what you're saying, state's website, but it was some portal that we had access to, and we were able to go look that, look that information up as we needed it, as we tested it. And I know when Al was talking to whoever his contact was at, at South Dakota Housing, asked why they weren't doing that, and they hadn't even thought of it, to upload that information so it was available for, one, you know, what kind of happened with, with that first batch of COVID money that we had a, a year ago in twenty-one, they had contracted with ID Bailey, the state contracted with ID Bailey to oversee that money, and so they had kind of looked at it, the state kind of looked at it, so by the time we come through to do the audit, it had been looked at twice already, so we had very little trouble with any of that money. So, but after, after I had the communications, I know that they said, well, that might be something we might have to check into. So if this program lasts for two, three, four years, whatever it is, there may be some changes coming down with it, you know, to improve the accountability or everything, so.
Mr. Chair.
I'd make a motion.
Oh, you have.
Commissioner Roskinek. No, I was just going to ask Bruce, for county to size of Pennington County, how long does it take the, to do an audit? I'm just curious how involved that is. I'm assuming it's really time-consuming.
I think we put in, I think around four hundred hours is what we put in. And that was something else, too, I guess I should bring up. We had a new employee start with us in September, October, something like that. And anyway, we were in training, and so there's time rehearsed that we wrote off, charged that off of training, so that's something, I didn't know that when we started the audit, but usually if I do know, I bring that up to the board in case somebody's asking questions. We are spending too much time, we're here too long, but we, we end up charging that time off, and we try to keep the bills comparable from year to year, but yeah, it's around four hundred hours, I think. Depends on the federal programs, you know, as the federal programs change. I know some years, if you guys don't have any new programs or anything, and the only grants we usually have to test are maybe your forest or your pilt money, those are the two big chunks that you get. Those are pretty simple to test. We can be in and out of them in a couple, two, three, two to three days, because it just gets allocated out to the schools and the roads, and then the pilt money, you guys keep that yourselves, you don't share that with anybody. So there isn't much to test that, but when you get into this rental assistance, there's quite a bit of, quite a bit of time involved. I can't remember what Al ended up, I'd have to look, seventy-five hours or so he's ended up spending on the, on that COVID.
So once that audit is done, then who actually reads it from first page to the end page?
Nobody does? I assumed you guys do. I thought I was going to make a comment when I got to the reports on it, and soon you guys read it from cover to cover, but no, I.
I think what they do is they look for the three things that you found and focus on that.
Findings, yeah, people will look for the findings, if there's no findings, yeah, I think maybe me, our office, and maybe Cindy, and, and that might be about it.
Thank you.
Pretty, pretty important job.
Kind of like an appraisal report.
Mr. Hagcock, did you have a comment?
Well, and I wanted to, I guess, thank, too, thank Cindy and, and all the other staff and Janet and her staff, and everybody else that helped during the process of the audit. Helps us, helps us a lot, too.
Thanks, Bruce. I recognize Mr. Drew.
So I have made a motion to authorize the chair's signature on the letter for South Dakota Department of Legislative Audit for the completion of the two thousand and twenty-one audit.
Second.
Motion made by Drews, seconded by Hagcock for approval. Any discussion from public?
So relative to Ron's question, how much time they spend here? Still trying to figure out how we can invoice the state for the time that they use the office here for doing this. Bruce doesn't go longer than that.
That training, Bruce.
So we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Bruce, for you guys' work. And that follows into items from auditor, and I'd recognize Cindy Moller.
Good morning, Commissioner Cindy Moller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that I have before you is renewal of retail on-off sale Wine Insider license for the Marina at Sheridan Lake, so we would ask for approval on that. Ooh, approval.
Moved by Hagcock.
Second.
Seconded by Roskinek for approval. Is there any public comments on this? Any from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Just for the record, that's the move to renew the retail on-off sale Wine Insider license for the Marina of Sheridan Lake LLC as presented and release the license upon payment of appropriate property taxes. Item B.
Item B is the renewal of retail on-sale liquor with Sunday sales for TK Saloon and Grill. We would ask for approval on that renewal as well. Second, or approval.
Moved by Hagcock.
Looking at my paper.
Seconded by Roskinek. Any discussion from the public? Seeing none? I'm going to go ahead and read this into the record. This is the move to approve the renewal for retail on-sale liquor license for Sunday sale license for TK Saloon and Grill as presented and release license upon appropriate property tax. No further discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Cindy. Next we come to items number fifteen, items from the sheriff, Brian Mueller. Item A is a request for three FTEs for the care campus and pivot point. I recognize Mr. New Sheriff.
Good morning, Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. The request before you today is a request to add three full-time employees to the, and I made a, there's a mistake on this letter, I'd like to actually add these to the care campus budget instead of the sheriff's office budget. These are FTEs that will, that will be to support the new crisis stabilization unit, but they also will be, they'll have a little bit bigger function than that, that'll be backup for that whole campus over there at the care campus, and then some of what we do over here through the administrative building and the, and the courthouse also. The, there's a real need to have security in that building with the fact that we're going to put, be putting people in there on involuntary holds, and they don't, behavior management system doesn't really have a jobs spec, specifically set up for security, and we do, so they've secured funding through the state and through the Helmsway for, to fund these positions for at least the next three years, and then that'll be evaluated going on after that. But I'm here today to ask for two additional transport officers to be added to the care campus budget and one additional building tech.
Chair. Ms. Hagcock.
So Brian, do you have a total or amount of what these three FTEs are going to cost?
The, the total, the total allocation that they're going to set aside is going to be a hundred and eighty-two thousand dollars for the first year, and that'll add six thousand dollars for the second year, six thousand dollars for the third year. The actual cost of the employee should come in a little bit less than that, so they have the funding to cover a hundred percent of the cost for the first three years.
So once you get that, that worked out on the three FTEs, can you send us like an email on the totals of those three FTEs and what the exact amount was?
I will, once we get them actually hired, depending on who's going to be in those positions. What they, what they've agreed to is to fund each one of the transport positions at sixty-five thousand, and that'll be salary. and that'll be salaries plus benefits and the building tech at 52,000.
Thank you.
And that was a, that was a high-end estimate because we, we likely will wind up with some people with some experience in there. But once we actually get them hired in the positions, I can let you know where they are.
I appreciate that. Thank you, Brian.
Absolutely.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinek.
Brian, are these then on the Gallagher wage scale or is it?
They'll be placed on our current, on our current scale.
Okay.
Yep.
Chair. Mr. Drews.
I would move to approve three new full-time employees for the Pennington County Care Campus to include two transport officers and one building technician. And further move to authorize hiring in 2023.
Moved by Drews, seconded by Hagcock to approve the three employees. Is there any public comment? Any further discussion from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thanks, Brian. Next we come to items from Equalization Director Shannon Mittenberger. I'd ask the commission, would you like to take the, after his presentation, take these all in once and somebody read them all in or do you want to take them separately? I would suggest taking them all at once.
Read them in.
Read them in.
We'll wait, don't you?
Just read them all at once.
Good morning. I, I really don't have anything to say. I've, I've announced before that we do abatements like this, the first of the year, there'll be more of them coming. They're saved up through the year, things that happen when a government entity acquires property or mobile home disappears, a building burns down, some buildings lost by wind. You had asked me about that several months ago. That's what we're doing here and there'll be more coming.
I thought you didn't have anything to say.
I'm sorry.
Thank you, thank you, Shannon. I would look for some, do you want me to read them in or does somebody want to read them in?
I'll read them.
Mr. Roskinek.
So Mr. Chair, so Shannon, for these to qualify for these abatements, they have to go through, they have to meet some criteria. And so if somebody wanted to look further into this, they just look at the document, they'd look at that document that would tell them exactly why this one qualified for that.
Yes.
So, that being said, I'll read the abatement applications tax here 2022. Link Realty Holdings LLC Parcel 17111, $30.35. Kenneth Guy Brown, Parcel 8002993, $78.08. Cindy Waston or Eric Patterson, Panel 8002927, $133.04. Wallace Wells or Crystal Genegas, Parcel 8000357, $377.64. Dale Fink, Parcel 8008429, $9.98. Gary B. Rayburg, Parcel 46726, $10.72. Ellsworth Development Authority, Parcel 15300, $31. City of Rapid City, Parcel 11669, $538.18. City of Rapid City, Parcel 57682, $449.94. Lee Bromley, Parcel 53622, $1,974.88. Richard J. Curry, Parcel 8002169, $68.46. Ellsworth Development Authority, Parcel 13628, $112.70. Ellsworth Development Authority, Parcel 13628, $1,704.46. OFM Partnership, Parcel 17113, $26.72. Susan Eisenbren, Parcel 48852, $64.10. Harley Harlan R. Eisenbren, Parcel 17140, $44.04. Larry W. Eisenbren, Parcel 45805, $63.11. Larry W. Eisenbren, Parcel 17251, $9.34. Link Realty Holdings LLC, Parcel 17197, $54.46. Link Realty Holdings LLC, Parcel 39788, $17.32. Sean Morell, Parcel 58129, $525.11.
We have a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any, Mr. Drews.
Question, Shannon, on Ellsworth Development Authority, two of those have used the same parcel number, the dollar amounts are different. Should there be a different parcel number for one of those?
I'll look. I didn't notice it. I don't know if that's a typo. Parcel, let's see, 13628?
Yep.
I'm looking at the attachments, trying to find the right one. I don't think, I don't think the attachments are in the same order.
The one I'm looking at, Shannon, they're both highlighted here.
On that page there, yeah. I was looking for the, the abatement application that, that I wrote up and I might have it in Lassiter's name.
Do you need my paper, Shannon, this one?
I, I can see what you're looking at. I'm looking for the application that I drew up.
Shannon, it's not in the public.
It's not. No, I'm not finding it. I don't know. So I can't answer the question now. It was one property. I, I know that because I, I know the property. Maybe, maybe there's a typo there. I can get back to you later in the meeting.
Mr. Chair.
Want to take both off?
Then we approve everything but those two?
I think we can and then table Bellsworth Authority till.
Yep. I'll be back down not very long.
So why not just table this for the period of time?
Yeah. I'd look for a motion, substitute motion to table, put on the table.
I'll make the motion to table.
There. Made by Roskinek, seconded by Drews to table.
And I'll be back.
Okay. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Thanks, Shannon. So that'll bring us up to the highway, items from the Highway Department. I'll recognize Joe Miller and it's going to be item number A to award recommendation R, R E P 2021 dash one recycled asphalt project in the wall area. Mr.
All right. Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Item A is in front of you there. We started the process of looking for some asphalt millings and, and, and looking at prices and calling around to some different places. It was pretty evident that we're going to go out to competitively, have to competitively bid this for the, for the amount that we're needing, needing on Sage Creek. So we opened bids last Tuesday or Wednesday, the, the 10th. We had a, most of them came in right around that 250 to 300,000 dollar mark and then we had one that I guess just so happened to have a pile somewhere sitting in, in the wall area there. They came off a project down, down the Badlands National Park that he's looking to get rid of. So that's the, the large discrepancy that you see there in, in the lowest bidder compared to the other bidders is he doesn't have the hog costs that the others do. So that would be, our recommendation would be to award to Morris Inc. out of Pure South Dakota for $72,000.
Any questions for Joe? Any public comments?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
I've moved to award R E P 2023 dash one recycled asphalt products to Morris Irrigation Pure South Dakota, the amount of $72,000.
Have a motion?
Second.
And a second from Roskinek? Any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair. Just going to ask Joe, what's, what's that come up to per ton then?
About $7.20 a ton.
Okay.
So we should be able to put about an inch on, on all 18 miles that we're planning to base stabilize and we have the state lined up to core drill Sage Creek here in March to figure out what we have for material underneath the roads. We're, we're going into our base stabilization with knowing what kind of material that we have there. We learned from the first year we did it that that's a very crucial part of the base stabilization is making sure we have the, the adequate amount of material on the roadways. So.
Thank you. Next we go to item number B, the joint powers financial agreement on Liberty Boulevard. Joe.
So this has come up, Liberty Boulevard, as many have probably drove it, is in some need of repair there under, on our portion. It's got some nice whoops if you're going, you know, the speed limit, you'll, you might catch some air there on some of them. So we were racking our brains and, and trying to put a bid document together and we happened to reach out to the state here on a regional level and ask them if they were doing any sort of concrete panel replacement and they just so happened to be doing a concrete panel replacement on Elkvale Road or otherwise known as 16B. So the two projects are, two roads are pretty close in proximity. So we asked the state, hey, can we add our quantities to your bid document and, and jump onto your project and with, to which they agreed. So this is a, a document, joint powers agreement for that project with basically stating that we're responsible for any and all costs that are, are subject to Liberty Boulevard. So hopefully, hoping that this will save, save us some money and the state will administer it. This is the only concrete road we have in Pennington County, so we don't have a whole lot of experience doing that. We're looking back through our files, I believe it was 2008 was the last time we did something like this and we had a professional engineer on staff at that time that drew up the plans and the plans were just needing to be a little bit different this, this go around. So it saves us a lot of headache and whatnot in the office. Total project's estimate is about probably $1.5 million once it's all said and done. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Is there any questions for Mr. Miller from the commission?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinek.
Move to approve the joint powers financial agreement with the South Dakota Department of Transportation for Project NH3270, PCN09CA.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by, motion made by Roskinek, seconded by Drews. Any comments from the public? Any further from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next we come to item C, the letting authorization for South Rochford Road reconstruction finally. Mr. Miller.
So this, you've actually approved this, I think it was back in October, the original one, but since then, the, the engineer is, and the state have actually put another estimate together and it went up about $3.9 million to that, that $16 million mark. So the state thought it was wise to reach out to the county and make sure the commission is on board with the, with that dollar amount, with the, the drastic increase. We're hope, we're still hopeful that it'll come, come in lower than that. So with that $16 million estimate, we have about $4.6, $4.7 million in our, what is now our, it used to be our STP, our Surface Transportation Program, piggy bank I would call it, or savings account. Now it's called the S, Surface STBGp. I don't know why they have to keep changing stuff, but they do just to keep us on our toes. So it's the Surface Transportation Block Grant Program now. So with that $4.6, $4.7 and a $10 million or a 10-year SIB loan on that allocation that we get each year, it's, it's about a million dollars that we get each year from the, the federal government with the state's match, comes out to about a million dollars. So with what we have in there and a 10-year SIB loan, we should be able to cover the cost of that project, which is good news for us, meaning nothing will have to come out of our reserves for this project. If it does, we have about $5 million. We was trying to crunch the numbers this morning, having Chris, our, our accountant crunch some numbers and figure out where we're going to be at when this thing's all said and done. So we should have about five, five and a half million dollars left in our reserves after this project is done. So, and I did get an email on Friday that we finally submitted this thing to bid letting office. After the, the regional office got a hold of the plan sets, there was a lot of stuff that was not complete. So the engineer had to go back and redo some of the plan sets and make sure it's good for bidding so we get some good prices. They finally got those submitted to, to bid letting. So our, our bid letting date as of right now is March 22nd. To put that in perspective, we should, we let Sheridan Lake Road on April 1st of 2020. So, and we got some better prices than what we thought with Sheridan Lake Road. Mind you, that was pre-COVID. So hopefully it'll, it'll hold true and we still hope to have this thing under construction by about the 15th of May, so.
Some, Joe, just for commissions, could you review a little bit about how the original grant for Rochford Road came around and how we ended up moving over to Sheridan, just to share a little bit of the history on that for the commission.
Let me open a document here and we have, Connie, our office manager, has been keeping tabs on all this and, and put a chronicle, logical timeline together. So this thing started in 2004. So let me see if I can get there. Believe Heiney applied for it in 2000, it must have been 2004 and we received it 2005 or 2003, we received it 2004. Okay, must be this one. All right. So May 18th of 2004, the approved county federal aid surface transportation block resolution. And then 2004, the letter was sent to Senator Dashill and Johnson. So that kind of dates us, doesn't it? Dashill is no longer a senator. Then 2005, sent to Senator Thune. Then the legislation was signed in 2005, so it was 2004, 2005. Worker order issued, was issued to NJS Engineering, which was then bought out by Interstate Engineering, who is the current engineer. That was in 2006. Preliminary plans were done in 2008. Revised preliminary plans again in 2008 there. So then we had the cultural survey in December of 2008. So then we had the environmental assessment process that started in 2009. So as you can see, it's been ongoing for quite some time. Recently, I mean, we, we really started getting after it after I came on board, Mark and I really started going after it and, and get, we wanted to get this thing done and you guys reallocated the funds, I think, what, last year or this year, must have been last year? So that we didn't risk losing that funding and I think that actually turned out better in our favor. So I think that's about the extent of where this thing's at.
Thanks, Joe.
Here.
Deb Hagcock.
Thank you, Joe. We've been working on this since I've been here and that's eight, what, eight years. So, yeah, going back and forth, back and forth with the loans and what we're going to do. I remember going with Tom to talk about the SBRA, whatever you want to call it. Is that 0% interest, isn't it?
Yes, yep. So basically we get an allocation from the federal government every year and it's, and we don't actually put that in our budget line item. It just sits in a piggy bank in pure. So essentially we don't even know it's there. So it's the best of both worlds. So once we do this SIB loan, there's nothing coming out of our budget. We don't have to make a payment to the state, they just keep that allocation.
I appreciate that, Joe. We've had many meetings with all of our commissioners in the last eight years, meeting with people in the district, wanted it, didn't want it, and in the long run, more people wanted it. The economic development in Hill City wanted it. Many people there in the Hill City area thought it would be a great economic driver. We didn't have too much opposition from the people that lived. We didn't have too much opposition from the people that lived down the road. I think it's going to be something that once we open, it's going to be open for development as well. So it will be an economic driver. But I appreciate you getting it done. There's many commissioners through the years that have pushed this, and we finally got it done. So thanks to you getting the rest of it. I mean, you get the bottom half basically done, but a lot of people worked hard. I know whoever, the person that started this, I think, was Cheryl Tretman. She always could get things through and was a great commissioner for, and wasn't her district, actually. She just thought it would be a good thing for Pennington County. So thank you for all your work you've done on this, Joe.
Thank you. Yeah, and Heiney's did a lot of work coming up to this, so.
Oh, yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskinet?
So, Joe, Sheridan Lake Road was a three-year process, Rochford Road, because it's a different project altogether, two years probably.
So, yeah, that's the plan is hopefully, you know, we talked about this in great lengths with our region guys here at the state and kind of figuring out timeline for this project. There's about three hundred and fifty to, I think about three hundred to three hundred and fifty thousand yards of dirt to move on this. So that's about a third of what there was on Sheridan Lake Road. So the grading is not quite as extensive as it was on Sheridan Lake Road. But your your construction timeframe is a lot shorter up in Rochford. So we're hopeful that they'll get all the grading done in twenty twenty, let's see, or twenty twenty-three. And then finish up what little grading they may have in twenty-four with the paving to be done sometime, I think it was August thirtieth or something, whatever that Friday end of August is.
So what's your feel for, how many bids do you think we'll get on this once they're put out?
Um, you know, I think oft at all, the contractor that did Sheridan Lake Road is very interested in it. I think you'll probably see a bid from Zanstra, you know, kind of your heavy hitters. I think this one's probably big enough, you'll you'll see some of those out of staters. But I would see, I wouldn't be shocked if we see four or five of them.
So do you think when they do this, will they work year round or?
Ah, so there's a lot of environmental aspects to that and temperature constraints. You can't backfill with frozen material because the water and everything, you won't, you just won't get the compaction and whatnot that you need. So you're fighting with that. And there's some things that they can do, while it's in the winter months. But typically, I mean, you're going to see, hopefully up there, you'll see beginning of April, you know, would be the earliest timeframe, so.
And my last question would be, we talked about during the construction process, will there be some dust control so that kind of keep things down for the folks that do live on there now?
Yep, and all of the materials are going to come from the south through Hill City, up Deerfield Road, simply because we just spent two hundred thousand dollars on Rochford Road. So we don't want to risk damaging our base stabilization. So all the materials will be coming down through through all those residents. So yes, the the plan is to put some sort of dust suppressant on the on the road there. And the other thing, so basically, all they'll see is construction traffic, because that first, Sean, was it two and a half, three miles? About two and a half, three miles, we're going to close that north end to allow the contractor to work in there where the a lot of the grading and blasting is. So that road will be closed for the first construction season.
So that would kind of start at Mary Alexander's and go down to the?
No, north end, other end.
The other end, start at the bridge.
It'll start at Mickelson Trail, essentially.
Okay.
Is where, so people will still be able to get to the Mickelson on that north end, but they won't be able to go back, you know, go anywhere beyond that.
That would be the Icebox Canyon.
Icebox Canyon, yep. So I think we kind of go up to a path, almost to the first residence is kind of that that closure standpoint. And I think we might encompass a couple of those, but they have other ways out, so.
Terri.
Did you have a comment? Good, Ms. Hickok.
Also, Joe, if you could take pictures of the progress on the way through, it'd be nice to see how you're coming along in the pieces and parts of the road that, like you have firm issues and environmental issues and stuff that we went through for many years just to get where we are today. So it'd be kind of nice to see how you're putting the road, where the issues are and stuff. I think people in Rochford area and Hill City really want to see what's going on with that progress. They, you'd keep more people off that road if, I think, if you had pictures online and stuff too of the progress.
Yep, and I think typically, part of, as part of the state's project, you know, like, much like Sheridan Lake Road, it'll have its own website and everything. And I don't know if the state is going to administer this themselves, if they're going to hire a consultant, I don't think that's been discussed quite yet. So it sounds like they're going to try and use some of their own forces as well as maybe an engineering firm as well, so.
Maybe you could bring it to us and then kind of show us the website or some of the progress and then the public also then can see. And then once you've showed it one or two times, people will get that they can get online and not have to have you here showing it all the time.
Absolutely, yeah, we'll have a, we'll have a Facebook page created at a bare minimum, so.
Well, it was pretty exciting to watch Sheridan Lake and driving it and seeing where, one part you had, it looked like, how the heck are they going to get that done with that huge, I don't know what you call it, looked like a ravine to me. And then how it came out was way different. So pretty amazing what can happen and all the work that's put into it. So people really have an understanding of what you guys are going through, so I appreciate it.
Yep, absolutely.
Moved to approve the updated letting authorization on Project P six-four-oh-three-ten-PCN zero-eight-P-three for the reconstruction of South Rochford Road.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Discussion from the public? I got, I got one comment, Joe. I appreciate your department for all the work that they do on this. I mean, this was a long, long project. And quite frankly, I was probably one of the ones that was really skeptical about reallocating the original funds, because I was afraid we wouldn't be able to do what it was, what we wanted to do, what where it was allocated to. But I think your department, your crew did a fantastic job of bringing it forward. You brought in commissioners off to the side and talked to officials and you kept everybody informed and involved. I think that that was very important for your staff, and we, I just want to express that appreciation.
Yeah, it was a, it was a pretty big decision, you know, trying to go back on twenty years of history, eighteen, twenty years of history. It's like, well, are we making the right decision? And, you know, we kind of relied on the state and some of their, their expertise, talked to, talked to Joel Junt, you know, and what's, what do you think, right? I mean, there was a pretty good possibility that this administration was going to pull that funding or could. There was a, the possibility was there. So to be able to use it up on Sheridan Lake Road, and I think, like I said before, I think we're actually coming out ahead, doing what we did. So it'll, hopefully, in two years, it'll all turn out that way, so.
Thank you.
Find it ironic that when it's done in two thousand twenty-four, it'll be twenty years.
Hickok, did you have a comment?
No, I just said, thank you.
No, thank you. Any further discussion, comments? We have a motion and a second for approval. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries.
Thank you, commission.
Thank you, Joe.
Now we're calling Cindy back up. Next on the items, item number eighteen, and these are items from the Compensation Committee. Item A is Policy four point one, which is vacation benefits. And I'll recognize Cindy Moller.
Good morning again, Cindy Moller. I'm stepping in for Carol Bancroft, the Human Resources Director this morning. At the last meeting, she presented some revisions that the Compensation Committee recommended to the vacation policy. And she has a motion there for you to approve the recommended revisions by the Compensation Committee to Policy four point one Vacation Benefits with Immediate Effective Date for the removal of the ninety-day requirement and the March fifth, two thousand twenty-three effective date for prorating the accrual rate. Does anyone have any questions in regard to the revisions on the policy?
I'll recognize Ms. Hickok.
No, I just move approval. I've been on the committee and I just think the committee did invented this process many times, not just one meeting, but many processes to get where we are today on these policies. So I'm in, I approve this, how about that? I've approved vacation benefits today.
Yep, is that a motion?
Yes, sir.
Then I will second that.
Okay, motion's been made.
I just want to.
By Hickok, consecuted by Roskinet. Discussion, go ahead, Ron.
I was just going to say, I really liked this Compensation Committee, because it's certainly saving us a lot of time up here and on that all this has been vetted out between the experts. And all we have to do is just look to approve what you guys think is going to be best for the county. So thank you.
Any further comments or discussion?
Those were the experts your department has.
Any more comments?
Sorry, Floyd.
Any public comments? Seeing none, I have a motion and a second, all on approval, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Item B, Policy four point three sick leave.
And again, Carol had brought this forward at the last meeting, so we're asking for the commission to act on the recommended revisions by the Compensation Committee to Policy four point three sick leave with an effective date of March fifth, two thousand twenty-three for the accrual, prorated accrual rate. And then also the recommendation of renumbering the sick leave to four, four point three A, emergency personal leave to four point three B, and sick leave transfer program to four point three C.
Jim.
Ms. Hickok.
I also approve of this, but I'd like to thank Sandy for looking up the military exemption. That was huge for our committee. She did a lot of work on that, actually on all those policies, sorry, Ms. Sandy. But that was one of them that I thought really needed looking into a little bit more. So thank you for your time on that, Ms. Sandy, and what you came up with, our committee thought it was pretty awesome, so.
Deb, could you explain that a little bit? Because I think you're you're absolutely right.
Well, the military exemption, we didn't really cover it as well. And now the military exemption, employees required to participate in military active duty for annual training and monthly job skill training will continue to accrue sick leave within the affected, affected pay periods for both paid and approved unpaid hours. So they're getting paid.
Yep.
Before, we didn't really cover that as well, and we didn't, we we might have done some of it, but we didn't have it in writing. So that's where all this is coming to pass, is we're actually putting these things that we should have put a long time ago in writing, so we have it covered. Plus, we're adding stuff that makes sense, since the department heads have been through a lot of these issues that have happened in here through their departments. It's really made a difference to listen to what they've said and what we've changed because of that. And it's made a positive change for the employees, I think, and the department heads to be able to run each department accordingly. So I think it's pretty awesome, just the changes.
Just to clarification, I don't think with the military leave that they get paid, but they still acquire their sick time and vacation time. Am I correct?
That's correct, yes.
Because they get paid from guards and so forth. So it's, they're still acquiring their sick time and vacation time, which counts, which is really important.
Yeah, they're still accruing the leave time on the hours that they're not paid for.
Exactly.
Or paid in unpaid hours. Yes.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So I'd look for, do you have a motion, Deb?
Move approval, sir.
Moving for approval by Hickok.
Second.
Consecuted by Drews. Any public comment? Seeing none, any more from the commission? Seeing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed, motion carries. Next, we come to item C, Wage Study Directive.
And I know you all have the memo from Carol in front of you. The main thing, and Carol actually brought this, oh my gosh, PowerPoint presentation, and explained why she felt that it would be best for the Compensation Committee to slow down and work through this wage study process and how we want to move forward for wages in two thousand twenty-five. Slow that down so that we're not rushing something and end up where we are right now with having to come to the board for exceptions all the time. And so we want to let the board know that that is the direction that we would like to move, is to slow it down. We won't have it ready for budget for two thousand twenty-four, but we want to work through the process very diligently and make sure we get it right.
Thank you, Cindy. And I, this is just for informational purposes right here, and I just want to thank the Compensation Committee coming together. And this is the stuff that comes forward is not to be in a rush and taking time, which may put some work on this commission as far as making some exceptions and doing some other things in the future. But I think we've become accustomed to that now, so. We'll, we'll work through this, I think. So I appreciate the recommendations and is there any further comments?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hickok.
So this came forth with Joe thinking out of the box and making the rest of us think out of the box and then bringing Carol on. And the department heads, I think they went through a lot with, between the Condry and the Gallagher and different studies. So at this point, I think it's good to look at the good things and the bad things from both. I think that's kind of where some of this is going, figuring out what is best for Pennington County. And, and Joe, you're right, thinking out of the box for us in order to make sure our employees are covered. We've done that already through vacation pay, sick leave, different things that we are changing already. So now let's go to the next step. We have a HR director, a HR generalist, and Pepper, I don't know what her administrative secretary, that are fully covering. And we'll look in to all the aspects of what we're doing in the compensation in order to move us forward as well. So they have the time to look at, basically, looking outside the box at different areas and then us feeding in as department heads and the commission to see where we really want to go for, I don't think it's going to happen at least till two thousand twenty-five, but it's going to take a lot of work just to get where we need to go. We already know from Gallagher and any study we've ever done. Gallagher was quite the test. And again, commissioners, you will go through exceptions and different things through these, at least the next year or so, in order to get probably some of this implemented in kind of a piecemeal where we're probably going to end up in the long run anyway. So I can tell you, your HR director, your auditor, and your staff got this covered, I think. I think they've been through it. You have Janet, who's been here a long time, Cindy, an HR director that's been around for a while, HR generalist has been around for a while. You got a lot of experience through wages. So I think it's going to be exciting to watch. I think the best thing about me being on a committee is just watching sometimes about the changes and the positive things that come out of it. You just sit there and go, wow, I never thought of that. I wouldn't know, I would have never thought of that. So it's kind of cool to watch. I don't always agree with everything. I put my input in once in a while, but most of the time, these guys are, they've got it right. And again, we have some frank discussions, which I enjoy too, because why, why keep it behind the scenes or or complain behind the scenes? Let's get it all out, let's get it where we need to be, and then we find the best solutions. And this committee has done that. So through the wage study, I think we'll get the same results. But thank you, committee, and thank you, everybody who has participated. And again, the committee that picked our HR director, he did a wonderful job, because she really, she's not quiet on anything. She knows her stuff, and she doesn't say, we're doing it this way. She says, just like the rest of us, let's be frank about this, let's get it out in the open, figure out where we need to go. And I appreciate that matter. So, thank you.
Sure. Mr. Drews?
So I totally agree with everything that's going on here. Three years ago, life changed for all of us. And as we discovered with trying to hire, retain, and, and keep employees, you know, with a decent wage during this period of time has been a real challenge. And so I think this movement to slow this down and come together with a, a plan that we can move forward with is a great idea. And I fully endorse it. And we may have to limp along a little bit until we get to that point, but at the same time, there's, there's a starting point. And that starting point, we know where that's at at this time. And so we'll make do with what we have until we get to that, so. But I appreciate everything that's, all the discussions that have taken place and the recommendations that have come forth. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, if I may.
Ms. Moller.
I just, I want to thank the commission again for bringing back the Compensation Committee, because we do have some great conversations. Because what affects my department might affect somebody else's department as well, but they just haven't brought it forward or brought it out in the open yet. They're just coping with it, dealing with it. it out in the open yet. They're just coping with it, dealing with it on the side. And it really opens up things, I think, for all of us. And we're making sure that we send the agenda and the minutes out to all the department heads so we can get input from them as well.
I'm going to make one final comment before we move on. And I really appreciate the department heads coming forward, and even this commission. This commission has built a relationship with you guys in order to be open and honest. And we've tried some, we're trying some things that are outside the box that we said that we were going to try and do. And it's come from the communications from the department heads and from the commission. And so, I'm really amazed and have utmost respect for not only this commission, but also our department heads, because you guys have really done some thinking outside the box. And we've got some out on our agenda today, some different stuff that we're doing that normally five years ago, we wouldn't do, you know, or 10 years ago. So, we're doing some good stuff. So, with that, I'll shut up. And I have to tell Deb, I told you so.
No, I told you we need less people. We're both on the same page, but.
No, just about the compensation committee. Now, you know why I supported it so much, because you do get a lot of information, so.
Yeah, I think we owe Commissioner LaCroix the thanks for his tenacity of keeping honest to recreate this compensation committee. So, thank you.
Thanks, Cindy.
Thank you.
Next, we come up to items from Commission Manager Holly Hennies. Annual Review Update of the Bylaws and Rules of Procedure.
Yeah, commissioners, just letting you know, we're still working on updating those bylaws. There's been several statutes that have been updated through the legislature since that was last amended. So, I'm working with the state's attorney's office to update some of those. One question that I do want to seek direction from on this board is the submittal of documents. If you want a hard and fast rule that you will not accept anything any later than 24 hours prior to the meeting, do you want that for public, staff, and board members, or do you want it as a case-by-case basis? We've had a few situations over this last year that I would just feel more comfortable if we had a clear directive and had it written in.
Mr. Chair.
From the board.
Mr. Roskin.
Holly, do you have any suggestions relative to that? You know, you guys are the ones that have to put it together, and maybe a 24-hour period would be a good idea.
My preference would be a 24-hour, simply for public notice, staff ability to respond. But I understand that the way of the world doesn't necessarily fall that way. And sometimes we do have people bringing in information and new information at the time of the meeting. So, it's hard for me to answer that. In a perfect world, I would choose a 24-hour, hard and fast. If you haven't gotten it in by then, it would have to be deferred to a future meeting.
Mr. Chair.
But I would like to hear the board's feeling on that.
Well, I was just going to say, I get a lot of, a lot of folks getting ahold of me during the weekend, and I say, look, and everything's closed, and now we're closed on Fridays. It's going to make a little bit of a difference. So, I say, and I got Monday to try to put all this together, and that's where it gets a little difficult with the 24 hours. And that's happened a number of times in the last year.
Okay. Mr. Drews.
I agree with Commissioner Roskin on that from the standpoint that we put out the agenda and the information, the packet to the public. And there's a number of times that we don't hear back from them relative to it until the Monday before our meeting. And so, in order to be, to try to do some of the research that needs to be done because of the new information, it's hard not to have, you know, some of that come in at a, what I'd say is probably untimely, late, but at the same time, you're reacting to what the public is bringing forward. So, it's a difficult situation.
Chairman.
Ms. Haggar.
So, if we make the public do it, there shouldn't be any difference in the commissioners. So, they have to do the same and be timely on their stuff. So, for us to submit it on Monday or the day before, I can't review it. Most of the time, I haven't caught it when people have brought things in. It's hard even to read three different people that came in and had comments that Holly accepted, and she shouldn't be accepting after the fact anyway. And she's trying to tell us that it's becoming hard for her department to understand and be able to do this and get this information out and make sure we know it ahead of time. So, it's pushing them guys. They have a hard time getting the agenda out, because there's a lot of stuff that Holly and Joan and Jerrylan have to do. And a lot of this stuff that's coming in too is stuff that you can rely on your staff. If you want pictures, if you want things, it shouldn't be biased. It should be on both sides. So, have your staff do it so it doesn't look biased, if one person is just taking pictures of what they think. So, to me, that's what our staff is for. I mean, if we're having problems as commissioners getting our stuff or not knowing some of the things, we have to rely on our staff. If we're not doing it right, or things aren't quite like they're supposed to be, on some of the things that we're like, I told Jason, I goes, guys, take more pictures, do this, this, and this. But when I get pictures and stuff on one person, it looks more biased, instead of having the staff do it, because that's your job. If you want, as a commissioner, if you come up with more stuff, or Holly calls me, she's the, this is her stuff on the agenda, and she calls me and she has more information, I need to disclose that, that Holly called me and had that information that day or whatever that. It's hard to put that on paper, but we have to say it. I talked to both sides. I didn't just talk to one side. I just didn't take pictures on one side. That's what I'm seeing, that people not submitting their stuff because they're doing the staff's job. The staff can do these things if you tell them to do it, meaning the planning department in different areas that we are missing some of this stuff on. Again, I think it looks more biased when you do it, and you're not disclosing it, or you're disclosing it the Monday before when all of us haven't seen it and your public hasn't seen it. And try to discern that on the dais that day, it's too much.
Deb, I'm just going to reel, we're talking about notice 24 hours before.
Yes, that's what I'm talking about.
Mr. Chair.
I'm going to make one comment before we start. I'm in support of the 24-hour notice, and here's why. I mean, we can always come up with a lot of different reasons. You know, we talked to a resident before, something after. But quite frankly, you know, Deb and I have been through the mining audiences and so have you. And if you've had 75 people in your audience who all of a sudden want to bring you up information, we had that. We had to actually tell them, you know, you got to have it in the day before so the commission can review it and oversee it. I think that's a good, good rule to follow, 24-hour notice, you know. And in hindsight, think 50, you know, and some, I just, these whole items got me thinking about how a process I've done when I've done site visits and so forth. I can remember one in particular that I didn't want to meet with the resident because I didn't want to create a bias. You know, I wanted, I looked at the property, and that was it so I could get mine. But we are supposed to, we have Communications, Give Disclosure, so I get that part. But our discussion, what we started on is the 24-hour notice. I think that's appropriate for the simple fact I've went through some of these hearings where we just got hammered with a bunch, and it just was too much.
And we tell people that, you know, you have to submit it in a timely fashion to be able to give the board an opportunity to give it meaningful consideration.
Yeah.
And they know that, but it's, when someone shows up right before the meeting with entirely new information, that I want the ability to say, no, I'm sorry, we're not going to accept it.
Okay. Mr. Roskin.
Relative to the 24-hour period, if somebody calls me on a weekend and say, can you run out, take a look at this? And being the commissioner for that district, I will do that. I've done it a number of times. And I find something that needs to be shared with the commission. And if it's shared with the commission, then it's transparent. It's just a timing issue. So, with that being said, you don't come into the office on Monday, well, you start at 8 o'clock, you might get here at 7:00. But if I email that Sunday night to you, Board of Hearings isn't until 10:30 on Tuesday, I would assume that's the mark for the 24-hour period. That, we'll have to establish, what is that? Is it going to be 8 o'clock, or is it going to be 10:30? Because that's when Board of Adjustments start. Then I could submit that information, and that would meet the criteria of 24 hours.
Correct.
And then, I've been at meetings where people in the audience, they just go, I want to start handing us papers. Well, that's not 24 hours.
Right.
So, we, they can't do that in the future then. They say, can we show you this exhibit? I'm sorry.
And that would have to be a board decision, whether you're willing to accept it or not.
As long as we're consistent, the way the commission, we have to play, you know, we're, the standards that we follow will be the same as the general public. So, we're all on the same page here too. I just wanted to find out when that 24-hour period.
From a staff perspective, Joan and I are checking emails over the weekends. If we get information, we're going to forward it as fast as we can. But we would want to have it publicly noticed so that we're fully transparent and in compliance with open meeting statutes, to be able to have that information up online, available to the public at least 24 hours prior to.
It's a good idea.
But Chairman.
And I just want to address that round before I go to Deb. That has happened before, and we've communicated to the public that we'll take it, but we can't really consider it because of the late. So, we have received it so we can look at it, but we can't consider it because it was sort of turned in late. Ms. Haggar.
But Chairman, out of respect of our employees, I appreciate that you go communicate that you're doing these things, or you're going to. I mean, they have cell phones. They've offered their time and energy, even on weekends, for some people here, to make sure that we're all on the same page. Taking pictures and having information and then submitting it on Monday 24 hours before. Sometimes the staff doesn't even know. So, how do we make that so it's more apparent to the staff so they have something to counteract? Because I think it's pretty unfair when you come up with your pictures and your things on one side, and you're not telling both sides of that story, and the staff is unbiased. So, to me, I don't think it looks right. I think even 24 hours is, how's the staff supposed to do it? How are they supposed to comply that in an orderly fashion to be able to counteract you, while you're sitting up here getting to vote on it on something that they don't even know half the information, what you're saying? So, 24 hours, I don't know if that's even fair. I think if you have something, contact the staff and tell them that you need this information. And they can take the pictures, and they can do the stuff ahead of time. And if your constituent calls you, maybe call the staff first, because they might have the pictures. They might have the information.
Mr. Chair.
Some people are doing these things, and it looks biased. And you're, it's not just your staff saying that. It's your constituents on all of us. It's not a certain person. It's people that do that. So, we need to think about even the 24 hours. Think, I'm not trying to be mean. I'm trying to say, I've listened to the staff. I've listened to the constituents. And if we're going to be fair, why aren't we communicating with our staff? Because they don't know how to do this stuff that we're doing. And if you have things, and I usually do, and if someone, I'll tell Brittany, I got to go out there on Sunday. Do you want me to take pictures? Communicate to the staff what you're going to do. And if they call you on a Saturday, you can tell Brittany, or you can tell Jason, they're in charge, we're going to go out there. And if they want to go out there, they can. That way, they're with you. That way, you're getting the full information, not just from the constituent. Give them the chance to do their work.
I'm going to reel this in. We're talking about the notice.
Well, that's what I'm saying. The 24 hours, I don't know if is enough, Commissioner.
Okay. Are you looking at the 70, what's the other, 72? Normal is by Thursday.
Well, open meetings laws is 24, 24 hours.
Yeah.
But we do our packets the Thursday before.
We do, we do the packets the Thursday before, and typically, you'll take stuff 24 hours before. That's the way it's been for years, correct?
Yeah, up to Monday morning, 9:00.
And so, that's what we're discussing right now. Are we looking for direction to give you? Do we have it turned in by Thursday? And that'd have to be for public and everything, everybody else.
But Chairman, what is, what is the solution, is what I'm trying to say? The 24 hours, is it 24 hours? Is it, because as commissioners, I understand Roskin's point of view as well, because you need to be able to talk to your constituents and be able to do that. And sometimes, until you get the packet, you don't get that.
You wouldn't even know.
So, I understand Commissioner Roskin's side as well. But I'm trying to figure out, is 24 hours, what is that solution? And what is legally that solution in order to make it fair to the staff and to the constituents? That's what I'm looking for.
And maybe we leave it at the 24 hours, and just that if you receive it and feel that it needs additional response from staff, or you've gotten overwhelming from the public, that we just defer it to the next meeting.
I was just going to say that. I think the 24 hours has typically worked. But I think there's some good points. You know, we don't get our packets till Thursday, so we don't get our information to be able to do the site visits until that weekend or whatever we're going to do. So, we have a concern. I think we could just do a general agreement that if something's not different from what the packet is, we can request a continuance so that all could be informed. I mean, I think that'd be a general consensus from this commission that if, you know, all of a sudden, I look at it and I see that some discrepancies in it after doing a site visit, that at the next meeting, I'm going to come in and I'm going to say, you know, I went and I visited with this person, looked at this. I'd request a continuance till the next commission meeting because I think there were some changes, some more information that could be brought forward. Wouldn't that be the general consensus of this commission if that happened?
Or ask for a continuance as a commissioner if you took pictures that weekend and stuff that you needed more time to talk with the staff about the information.
Yeah.
Instead of bring it forward 24 hours before. Sometimes that works a little bit better so everybody's on the same page.
So, from what I'm hearing, Holly, is they still want the 24 hours?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
And when I do site inspection, I'm doing that to help the commissioners make a decision. I'm not doing it to counteract anybody. I'm just doing it because I found the information that I didn't see in a packet. Just, it's for the commissioners to have a better feel on how they're going to vote. So, that's the only reason I do what I do. And unfortunately, the commission meetings are on Tuesday, and people read this online, and they ask me. I get these requests on a weekend. I just don't, you know, if we were meeting on Thursday, it'd be a lot easier, but just difficult with the weekends and then Tuesday, the meeting.
So, Holly, I think you got the general idea. I think general idea is the 24 hours, and the commission respectfully, you know, if there's something, comes up different from recommendations from the staff reported that we'd ask for a continuance as commissioners part. I don't think we really have too many problems with the public, the 24 hours.
No, just a, yeah, controversial items.
Yeah.
We really push that they get it in ahead of time.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
If there's any other suggestions, changes that anybody wishes to see, certainly get that to me, and we'll get that on a future agenda for the updates.
Thank you, Ms. Holly.
Yep. And then the other item I have to the commissioners is Item B, which is the Extension Advisory Board Members and Their Compensation Rates. I was contacted by Regina to look at bylaws and a possible update to that. And once I was in there, started reading some statutes and came across one that is kind of an oddball that I didn't know was out there, that members of the extension board by statute should be being paid for their services. And currently, we are not doing that. So, I wanted to bring this forward to the board to ask you to set a per diem rate for those members. And statute basically just says that they should receive payment comparable to members of other county boards, but in no case less than $5 for each day or day, part of the day actually engaged in the service of the board.
Chairman.
Mr. Ms. Haggar.
So, to be fair, I would move to set the per diem at $50 for the extension. So to be fair, I would move to set the per diem at fifty dollars for the Extension Advisory Board members per SDCL thirteen dash fifty-four dash twelve because that's what we have for. And thank you for the, looking up the information. That's what we pay our other boards. That's why I would come to that motion.
Is there a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, there's a motion and a second for the fifty dollars discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Question for Holly. So they've never been paid?
No, we've gone back and done research as far as we can. And there's been no discussion or no records of this. Yeah, kind of crazy. I was shocked when I found it.
I'm going to take a moment of privilege. Well, my turn to speak. For, we had our Extension Board meeting Monday and this was on, this was discussed. And it was pretty much, as it says in here, five dollars a day. Most Extension Boards said that they were going to waive the fee. They want to waive the fee. I'm, I'm just.
Well, that'll make that choice. And that is an option for any individual that serves on our boards is they can do that. And we do have some that are currently doing that. So it is an option.
So, I mean, you could set it up. I'm not, I'm not saying one way or another. I'm just passing on the information that their passion is more important than the money. And I think that's why they were looking at five dollars and they probably waive it. That was something that came from them, not me.
And Kim did share with me that whatever dollar amount the board sets it at, it will not impact their budget. They can, they can handle it. So the fifty dollars would be okay with them.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
So I understand not paying some of the voluntary ones that are set up for a specific cause and they meet several meetings and basically concludes it. But I think for any of these permanent, long-term boards, I mean, we've got a lot of people that dedicate a lot of time to our cause. And so I, I, this is only appropriate that there be some sort of reimbursement provided to them. So, so do we pay any mileage or anything?
That's allowed in statute as well.
So that goes along with this then? Okay, so they haven't even received that. So if we have somebody coming in from a long distance, they've been, okay. Yeah, I'm totally in favor of this.
Any discussion from the public? Motion on the floor is from Haggard to set it at fifty dollars and seconded by Mr. Ross Connect. Any further discussion from the board? Here none? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Next we come to item number twenty, the twenty twenty-three legislative session. I'll recognize Commissioner Drews.
Well, we have a number of bills that impact counties. And the ones that I'm tracking at the, at the current time, I mean, have a definitive impact for Pennington County. And probably most of them have impacts for all the other counties too. So we're at the stage in time right now where most of the bills are just being introduced, being filed. And I suspect there'll be a number of them that'll be filed today. But up to this point, there's only been in the House and Senate less than sixty bills basically introduced in each of those bodies. And there's probably about, you know, ten of those that have an impact on us. Some of them actually are, are bills that we're interested in. For example, the postage bill that Janet has brought forth and Janet and Holly have worked hard on this. And so now the committees are, that the bills have been assigned to are setting up their hearing dates. And so on this Thursday, there's two of the bills that are coming up that would have implications for Pennington County. One is a bill that would call for a sales tax or a grocery receipts tax for facilities for counties. So county buildings, county jails, et cetera, would fall under that. That's being heard in the House Taxation Committee early Thursday morning. That's one that I think can create some conversation, basically of saying, you know, the current system that we're under is not working well for, for counties. And so there needs to be some consideration as to how to revamp so that for one thing, property tax isn't always the revenue stream to come from. But there's got to be other areas, including maybe the state participating in some of these costs that have been put on the counties. Janet's postage bill comes up before, is that local government?
House Transportation.
Of House Transportation, yeah. And that comes up Thursday morning also, like at nine o'clock, I believe it is. And so, and I, I think that the key to some of these bills that we're really interested in is making sure that we give it a good send-off in the first committee. Obviously, it goes through each house, committees in each houses. And it can be multiple committees before it's all said and done, where it ends up. The postage bill, I don't know if that will stay strictly with House Transportation or if House Transportation will move that on to someplace else. At the same time, maybe onto the local government or something too. So, but anyway, I think the, the point is, is making sure that some of these bills are, are heard and legislators understand where our concerns may be. So I have a, a number of them that, that I've marked. One of them that will be coming up soon is actually coming out of the governor's office again. This came up, I think, three or four years ago. And it was, I think it was ten fifty-seven at that time. And I'm looking at Brittany on this to see if she remembers it. This is where, for us, it would change the vote unlike the Board of Adjustment. Instead of being the super majority, it'll allow for a majority vote on that. And the governor's office is pushing to try to get it consistent throughout the state. Get the, get the law changed so that this would be consistent for any boards that instead of requiring the super majority, it'd be a simple majority of those elected. And so that's another bill that will be coming forward. I don't know exactly when and I haven't talked to Brittany and Jason relative to your thoughts on that. If there's something there that we should be considering different than what the bill says. But it's a House Bill ten twenty-nine is the one that's bringing that forward. The grocery receipts tax, even though they're calling it a sales tax, I think, and I'll look at Jay. I think grocery receipts tax is a little bit different than sales tax. And so I'm not sure how this is being pushed at the committee level. Because they're, they keep calling it the sponsors even calling it a sales tax.
I'm trying to read through and catch up.
Okay, for bonds. Okay. So, so again, I think the point on that one is, is that current system doesn't work well. Legislature needs to be considering something that is more adapt, adaptable to, for county government to allow for the revenue streams. There's another bill that, that, I should have asked Barry to stay for this one. But it's requiring, it's, what it's trying to do is establish a number for veteran service officers. Of saying if you have X amount of veterans living in your county, then you need to have these many veteran service officers. Well, there's nothing that comes along with it, I don't believe. I don't think there's any funding that comes along with it. And so it's, it's another situation where they're telling us what we have to do even though what we're doing may be working well. And I don't think this is geared towards Pennington County at all. I think everybody is pretty happy with the extended, with the veteran service work that our people do under Barry. But there's, I think they're shooting at a couple of counties of saying, you're understaffed and you need to build that staff up. I don't think the way of doing that is demanding that they have these number of people. So that'd be another bill that I, I think we just take the position that basically we don't want unfunded mandates coming by. Senate Bill twenty-one, and I don't know if this has been scheduled for a hearing yet, Ron. Do you know if it's been?
Last I heard, that was going to be the twenty-fourth.
Okay, oh yeah, okay, that's right. Next week, twenty-fourth. But this is the one that, for the state to make an appropriation for the Black Hills National Forest Land and Resource Management Plan. This is on the revision. This is, this is the same item that we have committed fifty thousand dollars that we've, with other counties to assist in the state of Wyoming and counties in Wyoming. And this is the effort on behalf of the state of South Dakota to provide some dollars to help with trying to save the timber industry. And so I think the bill right now has nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars appropriation.
We're, we're fifty for a full-time employee that'll be a state employee for four years. And bless you, then five hundred thousand, that'll be a match for the counties. And no one county can have more than fifty percent of that. And then the question was, we've committed fifty thousand, could that be considered a match? And they hadn't come up with the final answer on that because, because the money hasn't actually been allocated towards anything. Hunter Roberts, he was going to look into that to see if we could, that could be a match under that program.
Okay, thank you. Another bill, Senate Bill thirty-one is one that, to allow the, the state to create a decal for non-residents visiting the state for off-road vehicles. And I, I think we need to take a closer look at that to see how, where, where does that leave the, the counties? The counties are the ones that are picking up most of the cost for the road repair and so forth. So that, that needs to be scrutinized a little more. And then I have Senate Bill fifty-six also, which is a bill which would, and this is probably designed for one county in mind, but it's to revise the requirements to relocate a county seat. And so, and I haven't heard of Silver City wanting to relocate the county seat out there. I don't think it is directed at Pennington County at all. But I think it is maybe like Dewey County. I think there are some of these counties that are looking at potentially trying to do things different in the future compared to what they've done in the past. So I just think there's some of those that we need to just pay a little bit close attention to. And I'll be following those and trying to establish a, a time to go testify for any of the bills that we feel have the, have the real need, so.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Ross.
I, I'll just mention a few that I looked at. And Gary had mentioned some of the ones that I highlighted, so I won't bring those back up. But House Bill ten sixteen, I thought that was interesting. Authorize the South Dakota Department of Corrections to construct a prison facility for offenders committed to the Department of Corrections in Rapid City to make an appropriation there for and declare an emergency. And if I got into the heart of this particular one, it's a sixty million. They're asking for sixty million if I got that right. And that sixty million would be, what would be a woman's prison if I got that right. And House Bill ten twenty, that would provide the sale of a certain surplus real estate in Rapid City to Pennington County and to provide for the deposit of the proceeds. And I'm, I'm not quite sure what that's about, but I think, I know Brian was talking about a piece of land that a future prison could be built on. So those are two that I'm, I just looked at and I printed out the, the full bill. But those are a couple that I'm just going to follow. And one would be to make, House Bill ten thirty-five, to make an appropriation of the Department of Revenue for the modernization of the mortar vehicle administration process system and declared emergency. And I think that would be something that Janet, Janet's office would be interested in. And I, what they're looking for there is a certain amount of money for software, change, change the current software program they're using. Then House Bill ten fifty, I got that email from Christie Jacobson today. And that would be an act to authorize counties to issue bonds where certain expenditures funded by grocery receipts, receipts tax. The proceeds of the bonds may be used for construction, repair, renovation of courthouses, public safety centers and jails. And then they can also be used for addiction centers as well. And Senate Bill thirty-three, so Lloyd and I went to the Big Five meeting the other day and a representative from South Dakota School of Mines had mentioned that we're talking about cost of construction, jails, any public buildings. And there's their mineral industrial building that they received funding for. Whether about, they're short on that. So Senate Bill thirty-three would amend an appropriation for the revised construction cost of the mineral industrial, industries, industry building at the School of Mines and Technology. And the last one, Senate Bill forty-one, to establish a program for housing infrastructure loans and grants, make an appropriation therefore. I think that one be, we definitely need infrastructure. So I think that's another one that I was going to follow.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Drews.
One follow-up here. Holly just gave me this note that a bill was dropped today to eliminate the sales tax on groceries, HB ten seventy-five. Put in the name, so.
I got a question. I haven't had a chance to read through this bill. But you know, Kevin and the nine-one-one have been talking about trying to get on the, changing the retirement for them people. Is that the House Bill ten oh seven?
That may be.
I, I was just going, trying to go through it, but I read some stuff on firefighters, volunteers and so forth. I think that would be one that we could keep an eye on. They've been working on that for, I think, a couple, several years, trying to get something for nine-one-one. We switched over. Ms. Haggard.
Is there any department heads that wanted us to look into any of these bills? Has any of them emailed you or anything, Holly, on any concerns that they had as well? Any of the bills at this time, like the Sheriff's Department or Indy or Janet's office? Because a lot of times those changes really affect them. What, I mean, affects all of the county a lot of times. But there's some other things that do major changes to some of those departments that might want us to do a resolution or something for them. And Lloyd, I don't, I'm sorry, Mr. Chair, I don't think that House Bill ten oh seven is, is that one. It talks about adding emergency medical services personnel into a Class B member. And then they've defined it as a driver, emergency medical responder, an EMT, technician, intermediate, advanced, paramedic, critical care paramedic as certified by the Department of Health. So I don't believe that's.
That's why I think I was bringing that. So if you happen to see something that Kevin was talking about, I'd be interested in knowing which bill that is. But I have to, have to say, these are, these reports that we got have really been good. I mean, there's been past where we've had less than thirty seconds of discussion on what some of the bills are going. But I appreciate the work that you guys are doing, what you guys all are doing. I think Deb is right.
I think just keep in mind, we're early enough, they probably have, including today's drops, maybe a hundred and fifty bills in. And they, they'll probably have over five hundred before the, before they're done with just dropping bills in the.
What's the time limit on that drop in the bills?
Pardon me?
When's the time limit for dropping?
I, I don't have that calendar with me.
Mr. Chair. So last week we got a web form. I don't know if anybody responded. But it was a request not to change South Dakota bylaws by approving David Johnson's bill, which will change our South Dakota convention to a primary. And I'm not sure, but that might be Senate Bill forty. 40. It's to revise the process for nominating candidates for the offices of Lieutenant Governor, Attorney General and Secretary of State. That's another bill that I thought I'd follow.
And I, I want to give a shout out to Joan for responding to, to those, because she does a really good job of doing the research and getting a response to the constituents when they do. And I did respond to Joan's, I think, which her response was accurate.
Wednesday, February 1st is the last day for the introduction of individual bills and Thursday, February 2nd is the last day for the introduction of committee bills.
Okay, so February, February 1st?
First and second.
First and second.
Okay. Thanks, guys. I think we need to take Item 16 off the table. So I'd look for a motion to take.
I'll move.
A motion to second to bring back item number 16, which is items from equalization and Chan and Rittenberg.
So I have an explanation. There, there is no mistake in paperwork. That is one property that was acquired by Ellsworth Development Authority. The property is a mix of non-ag and ag classifications, and our tax software will only allow an abatement on one abstract class. So there had to be two abatements for the same property to, to accomplish this. I didn't, in what I printed, I didn't have a copy of the, the one abatement application. I don't know if you do or not. Regardless, I think that's just a scanner or printer error. But there is no mistake in the, the abatement as it submitted.
Okay, so during that time, we already read through everything. And so I would look for a motion on the item.
I think we, I think actually as part of the.
Yeah.
When we table it, does that eliminate the motion that had been made?
Well, because then you made a substitute motion.
Yeah, substitute motion table. So, but it was read into record as, as correctly. So I don't think we need to reread it completely through again.
So do we have to make another motion?
Yeah.
Okay. Move to approve.
And move to approve Item 16 abatements, all of them.
Second.
And second, that were read through earlier in the meeting. So if a person who's watching this on YouTube wants to refer back to earlier in the meeting, they'll, they can hear the full motion. I think I'm good for doing that. Looking at their turn.
Mr. Chair, I got a question for Shannon. So Shannon, this, this property is all, one piece of property, actually, it's just, it's just that the zoning is?
Not zoning. The, the abstract classification in my office, the, it's a ag land with a non-ag house on it.
Oh, okay.
So there's two abstract classes on that same parcel, which is common frequently. A house in town, the land and the house are non-ag. It's, it's one abatement. It, it works easy in the tax software. On this type of property, it takes, it, it takes two computer keystrokes to make it happen.
Okay, I follow you. Thank you.
So we have a motion for approval for Items 1 through 20 that were previously read earlier in the meeting. And there was a second. Any further discussion from the public? Any more from the board? See none? All in favor, indicate by saying a high.
A high.
A high. Post. Motion carries. Thank you, Shannon.
Thank you.
Next we come to items from the public. I don't have any speaker requests. One's place. Ma'am, are you, are you here to speak?
I'm here for Item 22.
Oh, Item 22, okay. If you'd like to speak on that, there's a speaker, is it an item on, your item, or is it?
I'm a member of the committee.
Oh, okay, okay. Okay, thank you. It's not, you're the only one out there that's not staff, so I wanted to make you special. So I have no speaker request forms. And Item 22, items from planning and zoning. Director Brittany Multer.
Good morning, Commissioners, Brittany Multer, Planning Director. I just wanted to give the Commission update on the Vacation Home Rental Committee, since it was a committee appointed by this board, to let the board know that the committee has done a significant amount of work over the past year developing a proposed ordinance. There's still some questions on the ordinance, and I have been receiving some emails since the email went out last week with the final draft document. Our intent is to take those emails and put them in to the packet, to the Planning Commission, to consider those separately. Because there's a lot of information in there, staff would prefer to go in front of the Planning Commission for them to vet some of those concerns. The other point with that is that staff is going to put on the agenda on the 23rd for the Planning Commission to set a public hearing date. At that hearing, our intent is to just take public testimony for the Planning Commission to consider, and then set another meeting date for them to take that testimony and work through the ordinance. So we're anticipating, I met with the Chairman of the Planning Commission, or anticipate is probably two or three meetings probably at the Planning Commission prior to coming in front of this board to take in a lot of the, the public comment. It is posted on our website right now. Once we get that hearing date, we will do a public announce, service announcement of that meeting. We are hoping or anticipating it to be later in the afternoon, so more can attend. So that is the update. And yes, one of the committee members is in the audience. I encourage them to attend in case any of the board or the Planning Commissioners have any questions. They worked really hard on this ordinance. There's a lot of really good discussion, a lot of really good information. So I think it is a good product. There are some areas that may need to be tweaked here and there, but I do think it's a, a good product. It was, it was well done by the committee.
Mr. Chair.
Thanks. Mr. Roskin.
You know, because most of these are in my district, I'm, I'm the one that gets these emails. And so some of the concerns that some of these parties have would be the initial fee. Is it high enough? Is it covering our cost? You know, when you sit there and look at the cost to put that committee together, their time. So I'm, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, I'm just saying it's a concern. Maybe it's not set high enough. The penalty, is the penalty for not following the rules, is that strict enough? And then the ones that are already existed will not be, they're, they're going to be grandfathered in, I understand. And they're wondering if, you know, if, if the existing ones should have to go back and follow the same rules that the, the new ones are going to have to follow. I'm not saying right or wrong, I'm just saying those are concerns. And then the liability insurance, they're wondering if that liability insurance is high enough. So those are just some of the stuff that I've been getting, and I'm just sharing it with other Commissioners.
And our intent is, all of those emails, all of that information, so if you get some, please forward them to the office so we can put it in the packet that will go in front of the Planning Commission for their consideration. And again, the intent is in that first meeting, that first public hearing is just to take public comment, so the Planning Commission can, you know, go through those comments. So.
Well, I just want to say, when I send those to you, I appreciate the quick feedback. I mean, it just, it really helps me because I can respond back to those folks. So thank you.
Ms. Harkett.
Thanks, Lloyd. Thank you for all your work and, and the people that were on that board. It takes a lot of work to get there. I heard that everybody's not in agreement, and that's good. Because if you are, you're not going to get the best solutions and you're not going to have the best outcome. So again, a vetted process with people that don't agree on everything and some they agree on, and then finding that solution. So I'd like to thank, can you tell me?
Dessel Peterson.
Ms. Dessel, thank you for your time and your, and the rest of the board members that took out their, took their time out to do this board. And it takes a lot of vetting for this VHR. This is like the third time, was there for a couple of meetings the last time, and whoa, that's a lot of discussion. And like I said, it's very controversial in one sense and the other. I think there can be some positive outcomes from it. So thank you for your time, ma'am, and, and the board, and your staff, Ms. Brittany, that has taken the time out. And Ms. Megan, I think you've been there too. So thank you very much.
So do we, do you have a comment? Ma'am, would you like to say anything? Since I?
Dessel.
I'm not.
Good morning, Commissioners.
I have never heard a name Dessel before.
I know. It's spelled D-E-S-Y-L, Dessel. It's a Welsh name. I was named after my father's cousin, so sorry. And I get a lot of Mr. Dessel Petersons.
I bet you do.
Because people don't know what it is. What is a Dessel? I, I really don't have any comments for the board, other than to say, staff has been wonderful. I want you to know that you have an excellent staff. They've been very good to work with. And I was in local government for 29 years, and so I'm familiar with how local government operates. And, and I've been very pleased with the, the service that we've received from our staff members. And I look forward to the, the dialogue, because I'm one of the people that doesn't always agree with everything. So I look forward to the dialogue in the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Peterson.
Thank you, ma'am.
And Brittany, could you just explain a little bit why we don't have planning items on our agenda?
Yes, our Planning Commission meeting was canceled, our last Planning Commission meeting, because two of our leadership members were out of town and our other leadership was sick, and we did not have a quorum. So those actually got re-advertised. We got them re-advertised in time, so they will be on the next meeting agenda, on the 23rd. So those ones that were supposed to be on this agenda will be on your February, your first February meeting. So it was an unfortunate thing. We just didn't have, according to our bylaws, none of our leadership was there to run the meeting. Then we didn't have a quorum to elect the leadership. So working with the NSAO, we made the determination that it was better to cancel and reschedule.
Okay. I just wanted to explain that for the public to know. It's highly unusual. I think this is probably the first time I've ever seen this happen. So, but then we've been through COVID. So I think we even had one commission meeting we had to cancel because we didn't have a quorum also. So it, sometimes things happen.
Yeah, it was unusual, but I think we got ahold of all the applicants, so they were aware.
Okay, that's good. Thank you.
All right, thanks.
Next we come, I'm going to switch this around a little bit. You know, Item 23, we've usually opened that up and talked about our past meetings or something that wasn't assigned to us. And if you, if you read on our agenda, Item 23 is actually a, is a time for individual members to bring forth ideas or concerns to the full board. Official action will not be taken on any items brought forth at this time. Direction may get, be given to bring items back before the board for future consideration. So I, I believe we can still give under reports, other reports that we've, places we've done. But Item 23, I think would be more appropriate for if, if a Commissioner has a concern on something. An example I would use was like the Haynes Avenue. That's the type of thing we should bring, just to bring it to staff's attention so that they could research or bring it back. Or if you're going to plan on putting it on the agenda, I think that's the proper way to go with that, if everybody's okay with that. That's what I take, what Items 23 is supposed to be for, is a general concern of the commission. So if you're okay with that direction, I hope we'll move forward with that item. I don't see any concerns. Ms. Harkett.
So if we have something that we need to bring up, it's not a committee, then where do we bring it up?
Under reports, just under, just like our committee reports. I think you just do them all, what you do, your regular committee reports, and any additional you did and want to communicate to the board, you do it underneath that.
Okay. It was just something on one of the members of the state here that was a positive, but.
Yeah, I think you can bring that up under your reports.
Sounds good.
So with that, we'll go to committee reports, which is our, the scheduled meetings for Commissioners, and I'll say, and other meetings that you've had. Under Item A, you guys have seen, have gotten your committee assignments. Has anybody got a big heartburn over any, any of the concern or appointments that they've gotten? Anything that doesn't work for them? I think Holly went through them, tried to do as fair as she could through as far as time schedules for the Commissioners, what they came up with, and trying to be fair with the numbers. We'll see, none? Concerns on that? We will move forward. Just asking you to review those and probably get with, if you'd like notifications, a certain way through. Joan's been doing a very good job of communicating your assignments, making sure she can do it in Google emails or however you want to do that. So. So next we'll, we'll move on to committee reports, and I'll report that Travis has had contacted me and said he is working to, that's why he's not here today. He is in Pierre doing some work, not only on his, on some of what he does for, for work, but also some personal stuff there. But he's, that's where he is today. So I'll just start left to right. Gary Drews.
Well, the only one that I had was the Central States Fair Board, and I was in Pierre on that particular day. And so I wasn't in attendance. I think that Commissioner Roskinak will cover for that. So I don't have any others.
Nothing else? Recognize Mr. Roskinak. You got Building Committee, Central Fair and some others. Mr. Roskinak?
Sure. Well, relative to the Central States Fair Board meeting, I think the point that I want to express today is that when Ron was here, we talked about the economic impact of this, the Central States Fair and the Black Hills Stock Show has. So he, he'd like to put together an economic impact study. And the proposal that he had at that meeting, I think was around $40,000. So, you know, they're going to be looking for stakeholders, and I think they will eventually come to the county and up for 40,000, but you might be looking at 10,000. But I think when you do that economic impact study, it's important for the general public to realize how important these two events are and how much they impact our community. And so, other than that, I was just kind of an update on committee reports. Getting ready for Black Hills Stock Show, which I believe Ron said 27th of January through the 4th of February. And the Building Committee. You know, I think we, we need, we need space, and everything seems to hinge around that Great Western Bank building. Are we going to get it? Are we not going to get it? So after the meeting, I got ahold of First Interstate Bank, and Scott Ryman made a phone call, the mic. And I don't know if they ever connected, but he, basically the, the text that I got said, yes, we know the county's interested. We won't have an answer what we're going to do with that facility for 60 days, because that's how long it's going to take for them to finish their budget. But they said, we got the letter from last year. And so I'm glad that we reconnected with First Interstate Bank on that property. Because if we could get that particular building or part of the building, if they, if they have to have that drive up, I think we can work around that. But most importantly, we get that other 28,000 square foot lot, which is adjacent to the park, Lamp lighter Lot. Then we got a piece of property large enough to build a building on and do something with. So that's encouraging, because I think one of, they're trying to find a home for the public defender. And if we could get that particular property, I think that would solve that problem. Other than that, it was just kind of an update where we are on 900 Concourse, getting the design work done so that we can figure out how that particular property is going to lay when, and when it's converted into the county administration building. And then there's a parcel to the north of that, I think it's 2.66 acres, and that's supposed to close on the 20, or 31st of January, if I'm correct.
That's that, when the board approved.
Yeah. Other than that, Lloyd and I attended the Big Five meeting, and the mayor was there, and a representative from South Dakota School of Mines, and then our liaison for Rapid City Area Schools, Nicole Swigart, and there's some other school board members there too, weren't there, Lloyd? Anyway, it was one of the best meetings. We got into. Anyway, it was one of the best meetings. We got into, basically, we focused on education, and the problems with education, and how many young kids are out there trying to raise themselves. And it isn't just this family, but, you know, Steve said it goes back two or three families deeper. It's the same families getting arrested, then the kids get arrested, then their kids get arrested. And he said, it's just, it'd be nice if we could just reset like a computer, just unplug it, plug it back in, and start from scratch, because we're just too many young kids coming into society, and they're not well-grounded. They didn't have a good education. They grew up, they fended for themselves, and those are the folks that you're, you're gonna see going to prison, going to jail, committing crimes. And so I guess what the focus is, is to, instead of building more jails to try to catch it in the beginning. And I don't know what the answer there, but everybody, you know, pretty much agreed that you just gotta keep building more jails, gotta keep building more jails. It just, it won't work. You gotta have the funding to do that. But it was a very, very good meeting. It actually went over another fifteen minutes, because we just got so deep into discussion. And there's, I just got a five-page, five pages a minute, so I really thought it was a productive meeting. And Nicole, that was her first meeting. She didn't really know how to kick it off, but once we got going, we really got going. So that's all I got.
Thanks, Ron. Deb?
I'd just like to recognize Clint Farley, who had fifty years in. They made, the governor made a day for him in December, I think, twenty-ninth. Thought that was pretty amazing. Clint's put a lot of time in with the county, and I thought that was in the state and represented us well, and said some kind of crazy jokes sometimes. His relative actually is one of my customers. So I would never known it, because I don't really read the paper as much as I used to, so sometimes I miss stuff. So I thought that was pretty awesome, that the governor recognized somebody that put that much time in for us. That takes a lot of time, so thank you, Clint. And the compensation committee, I think we've talked about that already. We have agreed our HR department with the generalist and our administrative secretary. So, and our committee, that I think we're gonna move forward in the next year to very positively and really make a difference. So we will be looking at the wage study and administrative leave and some other stuff coming up next. So those are things that we are moving forward with. Fire Service Board, we had some work in comp. We had Bruce that came. He works with Gary, very nice man, always gives good information, really helps us in our department, so we appreciate Bruce with everything he's done for us. We have a new, well, we have the same chair and vice chair, but we had nominations for it. So Caleb and Charles are still our chair and vice chair. We're changing some bylaws, and I will bring those forward once they are settled on all the bylaws. I'll bring those forward, so you guys can, commission can see those. Anything else? Looking forward to the stock show. I think it's gonna, it's really an economic driver for Rapid City and the surrounding area for county, or county, and our cities, I should say. So it's gonna be exciting. We did do a economic, like Ron said, economic impact study before with, I think it was the Chamber that helped us last time. I think it cost us like twenty-five thousand or something, so I'll be excited to see what they're thinking on that economic impact. They also have Visit Rapid City and some other areas where they can get probably some better information. Maybe that's why they're doing it a little bit different. But anything that would help for information and things that we can do better for the fairgrounds or Pennington County in order to bring more people here is always a positive, so I'm always for that. Anything else? I think I'm good, hopefully.
On the compensation committee, I apologize. I didn't mean to come out as I told you so, but...
You didn't hurt my feelings. This is funny. It's still funny. Because I'm the one that was pushing that we should, let's be up straight, that I was pushing that we shouldn't do it, and more because it had so many members that it wasn't really accomplishing anything. And so if we dissolved it, and then what happened was, was positive. We dissolved it and then put less members on there, but still have lots of representation from all the departments there. So, no, you did, you did just fine. You didn't offend me.
Okay.
Because it was, it was true.
Mr. Chair.
I just wanted to cover that.
You were good.
Mr.?
I was just gonna mention that Nicole mentioned that relative to the South Middle School, it's twenty-seven percent complete, and that project's gonna come in at sixty-seven million. And then she said, and we really need four more elementary schools. So, you know, that's what we're kind of facing. So her question was, do these schools have to be built to last a hundred years? Because what's gonna happen in a hundred years? I mean, the only thing that's gonna happen in a hundred years is you're gonna open a time capsule that we're gonna bury one of these days. But she said maybe we should make them less expensive, and they should last maybe fifty years, because in a hundred years, it's gonna be, they're gonna be functional lumps that leaked. So I thought that was interesting.
Yeah.
Her thoughts on that.
Okay. The EM Users Board, me and Travis attended that Emergency Management Board, and they went over, they, they've elected their chair and vice chair and secretary, which is the same as which was previous. So some of the stuff that they talked about, Homeland Security Grant, the CERT training, pre-disaster mitigation, they talked about. They talked about the new EM staff position, trying to get that up and going, and trying to get the buildings set up. Space made before they get the person hired that the commission approved to be up there. They've got some work, and they may have to do clearing outside contact, they're waiting on buildings and grounds to maybe, buildings and grounds that they hired some newer people and thought that maybe they could do it as a training to learn some of that stuff. That's pretty much went on for the Emergency Management Users Board. The next board meeting was the Emergency Service Communication Users Board. He talked about the unspent budget, which would be about a two-hundred times a dollar rollover. They talked about staffing, how they're gonna need probably, they're currently at fifty and need fifty-three. One of the other things that was discussed, and this is not old business for the board, is that the number of calls that we're getting from Box Elder. Since Box Elder was growing so much as though we, there's been discussions with Box Elder as far as they're gonna end up, we're gonna end up needing at least one full-time employee to handle those calls, which would come up to about a total, total of four and a half. And he'll bring forward a plan. He's got some funding sources to look at that, and then Box Elder would help bring in the funding for that in a gradual form. I'll let Kevin discuss that more, just giving you a little heads up. Box Elder has increased the call service considerably. That and Journey On. The Journey On, they've got a different name for the organization that does the rides and calls. But I want to say there was like fourteen hundred calls. But they met with Rich, the director, and they've come up with alternative, well, a good sheriff's here, he can help me out with this. They come up with an alternative solution, like a cell phone or something for calls to try to reduce those numbers. Yeah, there we go. So I was off with even the cell phone. Thanks, Brian. And could you elaborate a little bit on the Box Elder? Do you remember much? Sure. I think it's important that the board know about that, because budget time is coming up, and it'll be before our next quarterly meeting.
Brian Mueller, Pennington County Sheriff. And I know that Kevin Carley is putting it together, so I don't want to steal the thunder on what he's doing on that. But the Box Elders calls for service have dramatically increased to the point to where, right now, on the radio council, on the sheriff's office primary radio council, Box Elders also dispatched, so is the National Parks, the Badlands, and Mount Rushmore. And Kevin believes that calls for service are gonna require an additional council. I think what he's working on is a combination of funding from, about fifty percent funding brought forward from Box Elder, and then some funding that he has in an ongoing account that has a million dollars into it, to pull some of that funding in to pay for it, so it doesn't have to come out of general funds.
Yeah.
But he's putting that, putting that together, and definitely, just listening to the radio day to day.
There he is.
But that's definitely.
Your predecessor's here.
So he's probably listening from his office while he's coming around.
You are in the movie.
You know, Gavin, part of my job is to try and communicate this to the commission, but I think you guys are doing much better. This is almost like budget hearings, but...
Good morning. Kevin Carley, Director, nine-one-one. Yes, I was listening in my office and heard my name, so I figured I better come and work right now. What's going on?
It was something good, too. I don't know.
Yeah.
So I understand the discussion was regarding the growth in Box Elder.
Yes, I'm just giving my report from our meeting. I didn't want to go into great details of what happened, but wanted to give them a heads up and reasons why that your, the FTEs that you may be requiring are. You can give them a little heads up, so they'll be aware.
Sure, sure. Over the last five years, we've seen fifty-five percent growth in calls for service from Box Elder Police Department, and a twenty-eight percent increase in staffing on that police department. And when I met with Chief Dobbs to work on my five-year growth estimation, he thinks that's gonna continue. He thinks we'll continue to see another fifty or sixty percent increase in calls for service, so the next five years. And he plans on doubling his staff, so another twenty-eight percent increase in growths there. So right now, Box Elder Police Department shares a channel with the sheriff's office, Badlands Park Service, Jackson County Sheriff's Office, who we contract with. It's getting to, there's gonna be too much radio traffic there. We've gotten feedback from some of the sheriff's deputies about possibly moving Box Elder off of that radio channel onto their own radio channel. I think it's time to do that. So, but what that's gonna require is another dispatcher. And one dispatcher twenty-four hours a day translates to about four and a half FTEs. I think we can get it done with four. So that's probably what I'm gonna be requesting when the time comes. And I have, I have some ideas of how we can share in that funding, so at least for the first few years anyways. We can, we can share in that funding, and I, in my discussions with Chief Dobbs, he says that he is willing to have his, go to his council and ask for them to increase their funding as well. So I think between them increasing their, what they pay and what some ideas I have for us to help funding, I don't think we can, we can overcome the challenge of the funding part of it. Because, you know, four FTEs and one user, pretty heavy lift, but I think we can figure it out and bring you a proposal that'll be, that you can live with, so.
Thanks, Kevin. Ms. Hadcock?
How is it, I guess it just came to mind, if you have, what, ten, eleven thousand people in Rapid Valley, how many people are you serving then? That's a big district area to serve. If you've got, if you've got Rapid Valley and Box Elder, and then you have this surrounding area by there, so how do you dispatch that way from Rapid Valley, Box Elder? I mean, do you have?
Yeah, Box Elder has their own jurisdiction, which basically starts at exit sixty-one and goes east from there. That's Box Elder's responsibility. And then once you get south of, I'm not quite sure where the line is going south from there, where it becomes sheriff's office jurisdiction as opposed to Box Elder jurisdiction, but it's in there somewhere, like a two miles south of fourteen, sixteen, I think, and there's where it...
Outville, I think.
Yeah. In Box Elder, we've had the largest amount of growth over the last five years from the Box Elder Police Department. Sheriff's Office has had growth, but not nearly what Box Elder has. The same with, with the Rapid City Police Department. We've seen across the board, our average increase in calls for service the last five years across all of our agencies is about twenty-one or twenty-two percent.
But it doesn't mix in with Rapid Valley? It doesn't cause you issues from Rapid Valley to Box Elder, just kind of? I always, I never thought about that, how many people that live in that area and calls for service. Do you guys keep a record? It'd be nice sometime just to see where your calls for service are more located in the nine-one-one dispatch, besides east-north over by me.
Yeah, I'm not sure how close we can narrow, narrow it down on geographic data, but it's certainly something we can work on.
It'd be nice to kind of see where, in Pennington County, where all that, where the dispatch is working a lot in.
The majority, obviously, of our nine-one-one calls come from inside the city limits of Rapid City, and then the valley would probably be the next behind that, but Box Elder is close second probably in there somewhere.
That's why I was wondering, just from demographics and listening, where the population was when we were doing a lot of things, that how much that Rapid Valley, because it's right next to Rapid City, and then in between Box Elder, how much that would really affect the nine-one-one, and how that affects the police department, sheriff department, and then Box Elder being effective, trying to see who can get there first, kind of thing.
Yeah, yeah. I can, I can probably put some figures together.
Well, thank you and Brian for covering my report.
You're welcome.
So, and thanks for you getting here so fast and helping us out.
Close.
Thanks, Kevin. The only other thing I'm gonna report on is I, not only did I attend, I, the Community Relations Commission meeting, but I attended the Youth City Council meeting, and I communicated from this board what, I reiterated what this board had done the previous meeting as far as approving the funding, and discussed the fundraising part again to the youth that night. So they were very appreciative of this commission, and I just wanted to pass on to the commission that we didn't communicate, and they're actually had questions on how to do it. They, you know, and the thing is with the Youth City Council is they rotate about every two years. So if they can get the structure, I explained to them, they get the structure into place and how to do it. I said, get a couple of people together. I know some people that could help you out. I didn't throw Deb's name out there, but I...
I don't mind opening.
When they reach out, I'll, you're one of the names I give for, to help out with fundraising.
Not a problem.
Okay. Otherwise, that's what I've got for my reports. Next, we come up to approval of the vouchers. Look for motion for the three million seven hundred, Mr.?
I would move to approve the vouchers in the amount of three million, seven hundred seventy-eight thousand, six hundred ninety-eight dollars and twenty-nine cents.
It's been moved?
Second.
Seconded by Hadcock. Any discussion from public? Commission, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the motion carries. Next, we come to item twenty-six, which is executive session for SDCL one twenty-five dash two.
Go moved.
Aye.
Moved and seconded, and it's gonna be personnel issue, SDCL one dash twenty-five dash two-one, sorry. So all in favor of executive session indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Look for motion command of executive session.
So I'll move.
Second.
Moved by Roskinak, seconded by Drews. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. First of all, I recognize Ms. Hadcock.
Am I making motion on employee one, two, three? Is that what I'm doing?
Yeah, you guys speak.
Motion for, or the sheriff, yeah.
No, I meant employee one, two, and three. Is that what the motion is? Moving Alex Taylor Kinsey, currently B twenty-one, would like to release him to B twenty-two.
Motion's been made. Second. Second's been made. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.
Employee two, Caleb Lands Downing, currently a B twenty-two, would like to release, reclass him to B twenty-four.
Second.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Employee three, Malorie Minor, currently in A thirteen, would like to reclass her to B twenty-four.
Motion's been made.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Discussion, to none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Thanks. Oh, aye, thanks. Okay, now we, was that the three you needed, Deb? Or is there one more?
I think we should give the information about that BMS is paying for these employees, aren't they?
I think you kind of discussed that for the first, when he was up here, you kind of discussed, he did say that, the first three years were, were going to be funded from BMS.
Yeah.
You, you remember?
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Roskin.
I'll move to authorize retroactive, retroactive pay for Chantel Masu in the amount of eight hundred and thirty, eight hundred and sixty-three dollars and sixty-nine cents for promotion to dispatcher two, B twenty-three step one, twenty dollars and sixty-five cents an hour. That would be effective August the seventh, two thousand twenty-two, and place her at a B twenty-three step two, twenty-one dollars and seventy-four cents an hour, effective December twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Go moved.
A motion was made by Roskin, seconded by Haggar. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor indicate, saying aye.
Aye.
Furthermore, I would.
Hold on, just a second. So I, I messed up. So what I was, so Brian came up today for the pivot point for the employees for BMS, and for some reason, his reclass was today for these employees, these were reclasses.
Yeah.
So let's, let's not confuse those. So Deb Haggar lost her mind for a second. These are re, the ones I read, employee one, two and three are reclasses, and the ones today that we made motions on, on the pivot point for the employees were the BMS ones that I was.
Yeah, and those were, that was public, and these were just reclassification. Thanks for the.
Reclassifications that were making public through the sheriff's office.
Good, good clarification.
You're good, sorry.
Okay, Ms., Mr. Roskin.
I'd also move to authorize retroactive pay for Audrey Metz in the amount of one thousand three hundred and fifty-two dollars and forty cents for promotion to dispatcher three, B twenty-four step one, twenty-three dollars and fourteen cents an hour. That should have been effective September fourth, two thousand twenty-two, and place her at a B twenty-four step two, at twenty-four dollars and thirty-seven cents an hour, effective December the twenty-fifth, two thousand twenty-two.
Okay, motion was made.
Second.
Seconded by Drews. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Chair.
Ron.
Move to promote and place Kevin McCroly at D six-three, step fourteen, four thousand one hundred and eighty dollars bi-weekly, effective January the eighth, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion made.
Seconded.
Seconded by Haggar. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Drews.
Move to approve the creation of the commission coordinator position at DBM of C forty-one and place Jill Martin in that position at step one, two thousand three hundred and thirty-two dollars bi-weekly, effective January twenty-second, two thousand twenty-three.
Motion's been made. Seconded by LeCroy. Any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries. I think that's, did we miss anything?
Motion to adjourn.
Moved by Haggar to adjourn, seconded by Drews.
Aye, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, motion carries.